Good evening. And welcome to the Beaver Creek City Council Meeting for November 24th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schwartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, if you'd all please stand, we're gonna have a young scout, Jillian, come forward and lead us in the pledge.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all please remain standing. And just pray with thank you words, please. As we gather this Thanksgiving week, we pause to give you thanks for the blessings of liberty, the beautiful beauty of our community, the dedicated servants among us, and the families who will soon join in celebration. We are grateful for the freedom to govern ourselves and the spirit of unity that binds us as neighbors. In this season of counting blessings, remind us that every good gift comes from your hand. Guide this council tonight with wisdom, patience, and cooperation. Help us set aside personal agendas and work together for the common good of all in Beaver Creek. May every decision reflect gratitude, fairness, and care. Bless our first responders, teachers, veterans, and all who serve this community daily. And as we leave this chamber tonight, may we carry the spirit of Thanksgiving throughout our city, and we offer this prayer in gratitude and hope. Amen. We have an agenda before us. Any changes, corrections?
We approved the agenda before us, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And we have a set of minutes from November 10th, regular meeting. Any changes, corrections, additions?
Move to approve November 10th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 10, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have PUD 25-3, which is, was tabled two months ago. Will can you continue to be tabled until at least next month and possibly into January? Next up, the public hearing, PUD 06-06.
PUD 06-06, an application filed by POD Design, 100 Northwoods Boulevard Suite A, Columbus, Ohio 43235. The applicant requests approval to amend PUD 06-6 to allow the maximum density for a part of the residential portion to increase from 3.0 dwelling units an acre to 6.0 dwelling units an acre. The property is located on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway and west of I-675, further described as Book 1, Page 3, Parcel 2 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas. Ordinance 25-25, and ordinance amending, ordinance 07-1, PUD 06-6, Colonel Glenn Land Development, AKA Mission Point, to modify the permitted uses and use location to allow for medium-density residential on approximately 31 acres.
Very good. Do we have an applicant tonight?
Good evening, members of council, administration. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you this evening. My name is Todd Foley. I'm a principal with POD Design. We're land planning and landscape architecture firm here on behalf of the property owner and then also my client to present to you our request to modify the existing density that is a part of the Mission Point development there from three dwelling units an acre to six. We are here specifically to focus on a 30-acre parcel. It's approximately 55 acres that make up the ground that the current property owner has. We're focusing on the portion of ground that is south of the existing office building and will traverse from the Riverside Municipal Boundary over to I-675, just for a little bit of a kind of guidance or framework there. So, as I mentioned, I'm here representing my client, a national builder. They build single-story attached dwelling units. They all have attached garages. Their market rate, high-quality, north of $2,000 a month type of starting rent, private streets, very low impact to the city when we talk about maintenance, street maintenance, things like that, with it being private, they're very self-contained in that respect. The increase in density will allow this project to end up somewhere in the vicinity of 150 to 160 dwelling units with the rezoning. We haven't finalized our site plan yet. This is the first step in multiple steps that will come before the city with. But the zoning that's in place is always envisioned, a residential component as a part of it, dating back to 2007 when it was approved. We are looking at requesting a little bit of a location change for that residential, not entirely, some of it exists with where we're at right now, and I'm sure staff's presentation will highlight that a little bit more. And this request is gonna continue to support, you know, the mixed-use kind of goal of the original zoning and both of the city's growth initiatives. As a part of our request, we will be extending a portion of Mission Point Boulevard that will basically, from our northern property boundary to our southern property boundary, as you can see in the exhibits we attach. So, that is a perk, I think, from when we talk about how we can do, how this project can do its fair share to continue to grow that infrastructure and help that development continue to thrive and grow. There is an existing stream that kind of bifurcates the site presently that is gonna be preserved. There's also sanitary easements, electrical easements. So, that kind of like belt line, if you will, of where this property is, has a variety of conditions that my client's able to kind of manipulate a little bit more appropriately than maybe other developments might have. We are in total agreeance with all the standards and the comments that staff has put out in their staff report, as well as from the planning commission hearing. We had a great meeting with your planning commission, and we received a favorable vote from them, so we are, and that, I highlight that, you know, buffering to the west, setbacks, the requirement to extend the road, all those kind of things. Those are all components of this project that we know we're gonna need to comply with, and we intend to do that as we move forward. There is an existing stub street that you may be aware of, to the southwest of where our parcel was at. That is outside of the boundary of property that my client is currently under contract with, so we are not proposing anything associated with that. That was a little bit of a, I guess, just a discussion point that we had with the planning commission. That access point is another property owner and presumably will be something that will be addressed later, so just point of clarification there. So, as I mentioned, we're in agreeance with all of staff's comments, and we know this is step one in a multiple-step process. So, we're here to answer questions this evening and appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present this, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burkett.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The case you have before you is PUD 20, or, I'm sorry, 06-6, Amendment 1025. Again, as the applicant stated, they're looking to amend the zoning so that they can include a, or change the density of the residential portion from three to six dwelling units per acre. Wrong way. Okay. Just to get a bearing, this is a city, you can see the green star of this, the general location of this property is way in the northwest corner of the city, on the outside of I-675, tucked between I-675 and Riverside. This is a closer-up view of the aerial. You can see there's a 93,000 square foot building on the site, and the area we're talking about is kind of to the south of that building and to the east of that building. The property's all within MXPUD 06-6, and is shown as mixed-use on the land use plan, which kind of leaves it open to a case-by-case interpretation of the planning commission and city council. Again, their request is amend some of the limitations that were set on the original concept plan to allow to change from low density, saying no more than three dwelling units an acre, for up to six dwelling units acre on 31 acres. On the concept plan, I'll show in a second, that was approved in 2007, there's kind of some disconnect between the wording, where it said on Condition 2, it says no more than 30 acres of residential development. Well, if you measure the area on the concept plan that they have highlighted for residential, it only came out to 15 acres, so if it were close, like 27, 28 acres, you could count it as, you know, just some general map discussion. But when it's half of what it's called out for in the condition, we wanted to get that cleaned up, so one of the recommendations is to get removed that Condition 2 of Ordinance The area in yellow is the area we're discussing this evening, and you can see that the extension of Mission Point Boulevard would be that center gray area, and then the entrances to each of the side of the property would come off of Mission Point. This was the original concept plan, and on this map, north is to the left, and you can see that area on the southwest corner is the residential area. The whole property is approved for research and development, institutional, and then hospitality and retail, and offices up to the front north end of the property. And what this will do, change about two and a quarter acres from low density to medium density, change about three acres from retail to medium density, and add about 26 acres of medium density. And so, this would, what the updated concept plan would look like is the medium density and the 31 acres that we're talking about this evening. The remaining southwest corner would stay low-density residential. And what this does is, it opens up the opportunity for this medium-density residential to be a transition from the higher-intense retail and hospitality on the north end of the property to the lower density on the south, southeast corner of the property. As the applicant stated, there is a distance between Hendon Drive and Riverside. The planning commission was concerned that this property would be a, they would extend Hendon Avenue with this property, or with this project, and they don't control that acreage that attaches, or is adjacent to Hendon, so there wouldn't be an extension of Hendon with this project moving forward. There are seven conditions in your ordinance for consideration this evening. Planning commission reviewed the case and unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request, and staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Ziegler. I live in Riverside, Ohio, 4238 Blue Rock Road, but I'm familiar with the site. I was, my question was, how close is this to the Gerloff Cemetery? And are they gonna be moving the graves? When they built I-675, Frank from Frank's nursery, he said they didn't put the highway there for a reason, and I'm not sure what all the reasons are. That's all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I will close the public portion of this, and we'll come to staff, or, I mean, excuse me, council. Councilman Littrell.
Can anybody speak to the question about that? Because I'd like to know that, too.
It's more of a site plan-related question, where we would get into the grading and kind of the ALTA survey, where it shows what's out there right now.
Where is that?
That's why, I'm not sure. That's why.
Sure, either.
Right. Of course, if there were any cemeteries, I mean, they'd follow all rules and regulations contained in the state of Ohio.
I didn't really have a lot of questions. I did, in the documents we received, there was lots of things that were struck out from the original, from the red.
Those are originally struck out from 2007.
I thought that they were. Okay, I just confirmed that.
Sure.
Now, and I wanted to kind of highlight what you said, make sure everybody understood, that the original, the original ordinance had stated that this property was only 15 acres with the number of houses, or, the number of residents that could be built on it were...
What it was, was that there was 15 acres that said you could have up to three dwelling units an acre, up to 90 units, but then the math just didn't add up. It was back in 2007, so I was an associate planner at the time, so I kind of remember, and from my memory, these conditions were added at council during the meeting, some of these, the verbiage here, and so it, they weren't, all the math wasn't done.
I guess my, what I was wanting you to highlight was, if they allowed 90 on a property of 15 acres, it would actually be about six per acre.
That would, the math would come out to that, but there was two limitations, and they'd have to meet both, and so you couldn't meet one if you hadn't met the other, so that's where it was conflicting.
All right. Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Kern.
Mayor, I was watching the commission, and I think Commission Member Fountain raised a question, which is kind of a little bit outside, but I thought it might be valid. How many times do we have these projects come up that butt up against another municipality? He raised a question, kind of, I don't remember very many, and he raised really a question kind of outside, is there some value to communicating with Riverside just to make sure that they're comfortable? I, I don't know, I thought that was a, that might be something reasonable to consider. I don't know, I mean, I realize they don't have the ability to be able to tell us what to do, but I thought it was a good point that Commission Member Fountain raised. Kind of outside, I realize, just an observation, Your Honor. Ditto.
Yep, okay, ditto. Councilwoman Garcia.
Actually, I'm gonna follow up on that. Randy, can you pull up a map and show me where, where, show me Riverside, show me Beaver Creek? Can you do that for me?
On this map, north is to the left, so Riverside would be on the bottom.
Okay. So, that, is that the Hendonson Road?
Where that black arrow is there, is Hendon Drive.
So, we probably have not had any outreach to those residents because it's Riverside.
Well, we would've sent notification to everybody within 500 feet about that orange circle, and so some of the people that live out there did get notification.
Did we hear anything back from them? Did anyone respond?
The ones that are here this evening are a planning commission.
Okay, okay. So, I think I'm confused, and I may need a history lesson from what happened back in 2007. So, this came before us in 2007, and the plan was always to have a residential component to it.
Yeah, so you need to, if you're gonna label something as a mixed-use PUD, you have to have both residential and non-residential.
So, are we here tonight just to clean up language that doesn't effectively change anything, or are we trying to change and increase the density?
Both. We're trying to eliminate a, two, a condition that conflicts with another condition, and then also add medium-density residential.
Okay, so if we eliminate the condition, that would allow us then to increase the density? Am I understanding that correctly?
You can, you don't have to eliminate the condition. I mean, we're here with an amendment to the ordinance, so you can create higher density without getting rid of Condition 2. It's just, it was, this is an opportunity to clean that up.
Okay.
It's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to understand, is if the two were, it was part and parcel. I don't know if I'm really in favor of increasing the density, since a lot of what we see is resident complaints about how many houses we already have in the city. What would it be if we didn't increase the density? What would, give me that number again.
Well, it says for 15 acres, three dwelling units an acre, it's 45 houses, or 45 units. It doesn't necessarily say multifamily, single-family, it's just units. In terms of traffic, single-family by far generates the most per unit, most number of the daily trips per unit compared to multifamily. I think it's a 30% more trips per day in a single-family.
All right, I think those are all my questions right now. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff and to planning commission as well. There's a nice history in the packet discussing 2007, 2025, but I'd like to go into some in-between times, because what came before us on April the 26th, 2021, when we dealt with Mission Point A and B, or approved it, sorry, is a better term. Is it still true to the south, because that's not in this package, to the south it's zoned A1, single-family and agricultural?
If, all the way down, it's kind of out of this map a little bit, but all you could see further south is still part of the MXPUD.
Mm-hmm.
Then when you go south of that, I believe it's A1.
And that's a different owner?
Even that, if you could see, on that number eight on that map right there, that all the property says south is a different owner.
And that different owner would have the potential then to develop and potentially connect to Hendon? Is that all true?
I mean, there's, they're legally allowed to, I mean, it would be part of a separate project.
Okay. Thank you. So, we approved on April the 26th, 2021, Mission Point A and B. It came before us again on November the 25th, 2024, and that was a three-year renewal, if my memory serves me correct. So, we're about a year into that of the three years, and so it would come up again hypothetically in November 2027?
It's actually a two-year renewal, so...
It's a two-year, okay, forgive me.
And that's for the, if you see the pink on the north side of that map, and then the vacant area to the top of that, that's about that, where those two were approved.
And we approved an 82,000-square-foot Mission Point A, it was three-story, and 55,000-square-foot building, that was B, two-story?
Yes.
Is that all correct? So hypothetically, well, what's the status of Mission Point A and B?
Actually, the owner is here.
I recognize him from the...
It's fortuitous, so I'll let him speak to that.
Okay.
Jason Woodard, Woodard Development. So, yes, as it relates to Mission Point A and B, we're still actively engaged with a variety of users to occupy those buildings, and we have an additional use that hopefully we get advanced to bring back before you as well on the commercial side. I will say that, you know, as the property owner, we're supportive of this amendment, just, I think it's actually complementary to what we're doing, the style of housing and the proximity to the base and the contractor community, having a, you know, kind of higher-end rental product there that still allows that single-family feel. I'm probably going beyond the scope of the question, but the, Mission Point A and B are still, we fully intend to move forward with those and continue the commercial development to the, to the north of that kind of stream bifurcation there.
Thank you.
I can also, I can clarify the grave question, just because I happen to be involved in it back in '07. When the land was acquired, there was a process that went through and identified the area, and there was a formalized, I guess, closeout, if you will. There was no remains actually found, but it went through the whole formal process, and that's documented, that predated me, but that did occur, so there is no remaining grave site.
Thank you. So, Mr. Burkett, hypothetically, both are approved, construction on both occurs at the same time?
Could, yeah.
Okay. Just to be prepared.
Yeah, I mean, all construction would have to go through Mission Point, they couldn't come through the, any, I mean, really, there's no other way to come unless they went through a field, but they're not allowed, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. We would still need to go through a site plan process if this got approved and move forward, and there'd definitely be a condition that says, you know, construction traffic has to come off of Mission Point.
Thank you. Mr. Foley mentioned that there's a stream that bifurcates the property, and I walked it recently. It dips down fairly significantly into the stream, and so my question is, is there a floodplain issue, or a wetland issue, or anything that would involve the EPA?
There's no FEMA floodplain out there now. Really looking into the details of that would be at a specific site plan stage.
Sure.
I mean, that's, that's a lot more in-depth detail rather than the broad stroke of what the amendment is.
I was just trying to get a sense of it.
Sure. And we would follow all requirements of Ohio EPA and US EPA.
There's some distinguishing points to the property. You have a sanitary easement, an electrical easement, and the potential for wetland issue, so points of consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you. Just so I'm totally clear, this concept plan, this amendment here, compared to the other one on the slide, couple, can you go to the one, the, 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 the one we were looking at, could this be stopped about here?
Yeah.
And so the rest of the whole development is residential, and is that just wooded, or...
Well, that's, I mean, in the future, if you see on the outline of the whole property, there's like the green, that light green line, and that designates anywhere could be office, research, and development.
Is it, is it known at all, or...
You know, I've never really talked to the owners of that property, everything's south of that.
So, if this dwelling unit residential is still a part of the overall PUD?
Correct.
Is it a part of the, is it a part of the...
Correct, and, and, because on the original, that low-density extended up, that extended up to there, and we're proposing to redesignate that as medium-density. But the owner of the property says south wouldn't have anything changed for them with this amendment. Yeah, I mean, they had that many acres of low-density before, and they'll still have that many acres of low-density.
And so the desire in that entire orange part, if you put high-end apartments?
Correct.
Is it a little redwood? Okay. Which, if nobody knows, there, there's a bunch of redwood products on Commerce Center Labor, and they're, they're...
Thank you very much. I think I really don't have much, so keep looking for a motion.
Your Honor, I move to Ordinance 2525 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 2525 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs.
Ordinance 25-23.
Ordinance 25-23, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 93-62, 95-66, 96-16, 97-72, 18-17, and 23-8 of the Beaver Creek Traffic Improvement District ordinance by updating and amending the improvement fee, amending the transportation system improvement fee schedule for District Number One, amending the fee per trip schedule... schedule for this, for district number one, amending the fee per trip schedule for district number one, and amending certain other provisions of same ordinances.
This is a second reading. Is there any else from staff? Counsel?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 25-24.
Ordinance 25-24, an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek.
Again, this is a second reading, so any changes from staff? Counsel?
Your Honor, I move to approve 25-24.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-32.
Resolution 25-32, resolution adopting pay schedules for non-union, part-time, seasonal and intermittent positions.
Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is pretty perfunctory. It is, resolution 2532 is to amend and update the pay schedules for non-union, part-time, seasonal and intermittent positions. This would be effective 1/1 of 26 and is in line with the 2.8% CPI increase. These are actually adjusted 3% to remain competitive. These are positions that we really rely on mostly in golf and parks. But again, the 3% is pretty much in line with the 2.8% CPI increase. There is also an adjustment to the minimum amount of the very first pay grade for both tipped and non-tipped employees, and those adjustments ensure we're in compliance with Ohio's minimum wage. So we just matched Ohio's minimum wage in that instance. Any questions?
Move to approve Resolution 25-32, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-32. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-36.
Resolution 25-36, a resolution updating the full-time pay schedules of the comprehensive compensation plan for the non-bargaining employees.
Ms. Jones again.
Hello again. This is another pretty simple update. Unlike the part-time where the grade moves every year, the positions, the non-union full-time positions kind of stay the same, and we do a comprehensive review every couple of years. That was done last year. So the only adjustments or updates we're recommending to this pay schedule is for the top end of the pay grade or pay band for grades 13, 14 and 15. And that maximum that an employee could potentially earn in those pay grades is growing 4%. So the minimum's staying the same, but the maximum allowable is growing 4%. And this is really just to address some compression issues that are kind of a byproduct of a competitive market for public safety positions.
Can you just give a bit more detail on the compression issue?
Sure. So last year was a contract negotiation with the FOP. It stipulates the wages that they'll get, so the cost of living increase that happens annually as well as the step increases. There were a number of changes worked into that contract, and as a result, members that are represented by the union are starting to get close to what their supervisors outside of the union are making. And it's generally not best practice to make less than someone you're supervising. So now we're adjusting some of the toppings of the scales for the management positions that are supervising those positions.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution 25-36.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-36. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See nothing else on here, so it's council time. Wilma Garcia.
Thank you so much. And actually, I'm going to start off with thanking you for coming to our house for our flag dedication ceremony. So we recently put in a new flagpole at our house. Grunder Landscaping did a fantastic job, and I had the VFW post 8312 honor guard come out and had the veterans raise the flag. They did a little ceremony. They taught the kids about the flag, they asked them questions. And at the end of it, after doing the bugle, they had the children lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So it was really, really nice. We had several families come over with their children as well, so it was nice to see. It was right after Veterans Day, too, so it was really nice. My daughter kept asking the whole rest of the day, are the veterans still here? Where are the veterans? And then you hear about, you know, the military as we're driving by, talking about things in Beaver Creek, and she now hears the word veterans and says, "Oh, we had veterans at our house." So my four-year-old is enamored with this idea. Coming up here soon, I know I talked about it before, but in a couple of weeks, on December 13th, they'll have Wreaths Across America at Dayton National Cemetery. So if you're available, take a look at that as well. But Mr. Mayor came out and helped us celebrate and dedicate our new flagpole, so it was really great. So thank you for that. And that's about it for me. Everyone have a great Thanksgiving. Looking forward to some nice weather.
And the Buckeyes won later that night.
Yes.
Counselman. Counselman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the residents for coming out and attending our budget meetings, always very important and great feedback. So thank you very much to those that attended. I'd like to thank Green County Commissioner Sarah Mays. She guest lectured in my public administration class recently and really gave a great presentation overview of what she does and background and just glad for good connections and a good working relationship with the county. And I would like as well to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also would like to thank the residents who came out and gave us their input in the budget process. I think that was very constructive. I had an opportunity to attend the Chamber Links. Six awards were presented to various small businesses, and it was certainly a good evening from the presentations that were made. And lastly, just to wish everybody a blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Littler.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say that we had our final planning meeting, or, yeah, steering committee. Thank you. Final meeting. I'm excited for everybody to see all the work that's been done on that. It's, it's pretty impressive. I'm looking forward to moving on to the zoning part of that. Really, I don't want to use the word excited, as Randy likes to use, but it's going to be interesting, and interesting to say the least, I'd imagine. Also, thanks to the public who showed up for the budget hearings. I'm always impressed when I see citizens show up and show that they're genuinely interested and concerned about what's going on with the city's budget. I'm impressed by that. Also, I'd like to just, a shout out to the crew that finally finished the Fairfield Road section there, over there by suburban Boston area. The road looks really good. I think the only problem we're going to have now is everybody wants to drive 60 miles an hour down through there. It's a pretty wide road. That may be something we need to address in the future. But happy Thanksgiving. Everybody have a nice holiday. That's all.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several things. I'm going to kind of jump all over, all over the place, but first of all, I wanted to thank you and Bee Hope Church for a great Veterans Day ceremony. I thought it was really cool because we got to hear from the foreign officer's perspective about Veterans Day as they see it in the United States, and it was inside, which was a wonderful venue, and out of the sloppy rain and cold and everything else. So thank you. I got to attend a ribbon cutting for the Wings of Love. That facility will provide a lot of help for our elderly population who needs it, and they've built a nice place for themselves right here in Beaver Creek, so that was a nice event as well. I, too, want to thank the citizens who came out to our budget hearings and provided comments. It really does go a long way and means a lot to, to us as council members. I want to thank the city manager for responding to the comments he received from the Golf Advisory Committee about a couple of golf course budget issues, and I appreciate your reevaluating on, on some of those line items to improve city revenues and our patron concerns. So thank you, Pete. Also want to congratulate Sheriff Scott Anger and the Green County Commissioners on the ribbon cutting at the new jail. That facility is fantastic. Had the opportunity to take a tour of it, and will serve our needs very well. And along with that, I want to thank the governor, who came out and spoke, and then the state also financially supported that endeavor. So wonderful opportunity for Green County, and it'll be with us for 50 years, I'm guessing. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Couple of these things are going to be repeats. The Veterans Day ceremony, I can't thank Bee Hope Church enough for allowing us to come inside. When I got up on Monday morning at 3:30 and it was snowing and 30 degrees, I said, "This is not going to work." So we were able to make that happen, so it worked out really well. And having Colonel Zavala from the Greek Air Force speak gave us a different perspective that we'd normally get. And, and since we was in the middle of shutdown, we had no active-duty US military there, but we did have 12 members of the International Military Officers contingent that were stationed at Wright Pat that came out. So that was really good to see them. Also had the opportunity to attend a Veterans Day service at the Patterson on Indian Ripple, and where they honor the people that live there. There's a gentleman there that, he was in the unit that the movie We Were Soldiers was based on. He showed me his two Purple Hearts and his Bronze Star. He saved 19 people during his campaign there. So that's really a, it's a pleasure and an honor to talk to people like that, that have really been out there and done it. I, too, attended the ribbon cutting for Wings of Love. I think that's going to be a, it's a senior daycare center. You can also get your TSA thing there if you want to. I mean, you don't have to travel anywhere else. You can go right there and get it. They've got everything set up. And I actually thank Chief, they do fingerprinting there, too. So that might be something that, if people are looking for that, it might be a possibility. I attended the Fall 5K fundraiser for Girls on the Run at Wright State. There was a great event. There was over 1,000 runners at this thing with the girls and their coaches and family and community members. I'm a big fan of this particular organization. It's a, it's a nonprofit that inspires young girls in grades three through eight to recognize their inner strength, increase their level of physical activity, imagine their possibilities and confidently stand up for themselves and others. And I'm anxiously looking forward to my great-granddaughter becoming a third grader so that I can get her into that. So I think that's, I think they do a great job. We attended, along with Assistant City Manager Monica Jones, the Miami Valley Military Affairs Association Annual Awards Dinner. That was well done. In fact, Patty Phillips from Beaver Creek got their top award, so. And then I, too, was at the ribbon cutting for the Green County Jail, which is just sorely needed. If you've ever, and I know this gentleman over here on my right can certainly attest to the need for it, he spent several years working in that jail, so. But that's all I have. Thank you.
It was my honor, Mr. Mayor, to fill in for you at the chamber. I got there and didn't know, and Councilmember Kern says, "I think they got a job for you." And I think, I think he put me on it. So it was my honor to hand out the proclamations to the award winners on your behalf and council's behalf. So that was a great, great night, as well as I was at the, also at the jail opening, and that will be a great facility. I was not aware that the coroner had, was the comic relief. He made a few jokes that were pretty good. But that was, that would be a great, that will be a great facility that will serve us. Unfortunately, a service we have to provide, but that's much needed for many years to come. Tonight, real quick, our offices for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, but the offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. As always, for non-emergencies to Beaver Creek, if you see something in the road, you see, you know, something like that, call the non-emergency Beaver Creek Police Department, 937-426-1225. And of course, anything for emergency, please call 911. State of the City, that is next month, December 8th. Almost said next week, but got two weeks from tonight. That the council, that is the time of adopting the budget. Please come enjoy, join us. We also go over the 2025 accomplishments as well as the budget course for next year. Coffee with Cop is coming up December 4th, 9:00 to 10:30 at Target. It's always a, have a good turnout. We vary where we go, but this year, this time, it is at Target. So join us, Beaver Creek Police Department, and relax and get, grab a coffee and chat with our officers. So please come to that. And Summer Expo, I know it's almost the middle of winter, it seems like, or beginning of winter, but we do this upfront because we find out that college students and things are already making their plans, which is a great to hear that they're already making their plans, but they're trying to make their summer plans to, for jobs. So we started this earlier last year, and it was success. So Tuesday, December 9th, 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the Beaver Creek Golf Club, accepting applications for full, part-time, seasonal positions as well as paid student internships for various departments. So bring your resume and be prepared for an online interview. Winter welcome, this ought to be fun. Hopefully, it's not too, too cold, but hosted by the Beaver Creek Parks and Recreation Culture and Green County Public Library. So Friday, December 12th, 5:00 to 9:00, Wardinger Park. Visit Santa Claus and one of the reindeer, enjoy decorated cabins, festive crafts, joyful carolers, cookies, usually some hot drinks and some food trucks and, as well as usually Santa reindeer. I'm not sure if we're having those yet. Usually, we've had the reindeer come. And also, I would like to say that usually, I think it begins December 1st, I believe, is when they turn on the lights. So in other words, this event is December 12th, but the whole month of December, we light up all the cabins, they, all the, we thank our partners from Rotary to Optimist to the library to Kiwanis, I believe. They all come out and decorate their cabins for this, so we appreciate the partnership that they have. And the Parks Department does a great job with all the other lights and lighting the pathways. So it's very festive. You can come out there anytime to see the lights even before or after the main event. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That brings us to citizen comments. Would you like to address counsel on any subject? You have come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm hoping to be a future.
State your name and address again, please.
Okay, sure. My name is John Ziegler. My address is 4238 Blue Rock Road, Riverside, Ohio. I was formerly a trustee at Ailey Church, and I wrote the book, The First Settlers of Mad River Township and Beaver Creek Township. So I know a lot about the history. I'm not an expert. My book's in the green room at the Xenia Library. So I've been around for a while. I, so that's how I knew about that cemetery over there. It's on the maps, so they know about it. But we got some people in Riverside that border with Beaver Creek on Jeanette and some of the other streets around there. And by the Ohio rules, I can't think of what they call it, if you border with another city, you're allowed to have the other city annex you. And we were trying to get permission to have that process starting. I know I have to talk to the city manager probably more about that, but I just wanted to let council know what some of the residents in Riverside are doing. Right now, those are already Beaver Creek schools, so it would change the school districts at all. It would just change the city. Kind of nervous, I think I forgot some stuff. You guys got any questions or? Yep, so hopefully, now, that's precinct letter D over there, so other neighbors could piggyback off of those people that border with Beaver Creek, and this is all in the Ohio codes and laws. But I don't have my papers with me with the, you may have seen them before, but, but we would love for some of our people to be annexed. It's kind of weird to say that word. We call it detachment. It's a little nicer. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I was not able to stay the other night for the budget hearing, but I got concerned a little bit I was there. You know what the biggest single discussion topic was? How many people are going to go to the fly-in in Washington, D.C.? Most time on any single subject was that topic. Okay? When I looked at the budget, and I asked the question, both the city manager and the finance director, why are we giving, and I'm not picking on any one department, but you have to at times, 10% increase in pay to the staff members of the city manager's office? Why are we hiring all these interns? We're broke. Y'all tell me we're broke all the time. We're closing down the senior center early, but we're hiring interns. We're giving 10% pay increases to the city manager's office alone, 9% to most of the other offices. Why? There's no other group out there in the public getting a 10% pay increase, and I suspect there's some members in the city manager's office that are getting more than a 10%. So I'm going to ask, and I can do it, I want the salaries, the 26 salary, the 25 salary for every staff member of the city Beaver Creek. It does not have to be put in writing, I can give it to you orally. And it, next year, we're going to be coming up with the income tax. Come on, let's don't kid ourselves, it's coming up again. And you want this kind of stuff going on? You want this kind of stuff going on? We have $200 million in unfunded projects, right? Right? We all hear that during the income tax. The only one who doesn't believe that is who? The city manager. And you want me to quote him? You want me to quote him? That statement reached back many years. Actually, it was said longer than I had been here, so more than nine years ago. We have heard that at every tax hearing on the income tax. Okay? He wrote about it in the 2023 budget, $200 million in unfunded projects. What are those unfunded projects? I asked for the list. You know what the list is? It's road improvement projects. That's not 200 million, that's a lot less, the city's portion of it. 600, I think it's 60 million, is just for the new exit ramp. We're not paying for that. We're not paying for that. Let's get reasonable. You want the income tax. I kind of want the income tax, too, but I want it to go someplace. But how in the world can you go out to the public and say, "We gave all these staff offices 9% to 10% pay increases"? I don't care what the CPI is. I guarantee you, the government's not getting the 10% pay increase, the federal government's not, the military's not, Social Security recipients aren't. It's gotten ridiculous, folks. Let's get reasonable. Let's get real with the people out there. There's no such thing. Don't ever talk about a $200 million unfunded project, please. The city manager says it don't exist. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's perhaps a little important to respond here, and I'd be happy to-
I agree.
I'd be happy to take a stab at that.
I agree. Go ahead.
Mr. Lewis, I appreciate your comment, and I believe you put it in writing to the city manager, which was responded to today.
No.
Yes, it was.
I received a response today, and it was directed from Mr. Graham to you at 10:14 this morning.
On what subject?
On the 10% salary. Okay, so if you got that, and if you read that-
I did.
Okay? It clearly explained-
It does.
-that there, that there 10% was caused by a number of different factors, including the 27th pay, which only comes around every so often. So that's 4% of the 10% right there. There's also a cost of living adjustment, CPI, which seems very reasonable, and some of the staff in the city manager's office aren't at their top steps, so they're getting step increases. So there's a rationale behind that. It's not just 10%. And I think it's important for our citizens to recognize that, because at face value, if you just come to the mic and you say, "People are getting 10%," that is a ton. But when you look at the reason, and it being, there's 27 pays in 2026, not 26, that's darn near half of it. So while I understand where you're coming from, I think it's as important that everybody have the entire story.
I think the public should understand that, but by the same token-
Sir, if you're going to speak, come to the mic so we can be recorded. You're going to respond. I don't want to get too much, but-
I keep hearing that, okay? And say 10%. There's a lot of people that's not going to understand that.
I agree, that's why I want to-
More will not understand it. The only thing I've got to say is the city manager, and I'm not picking on his office because they're all getting 8% to 10%, okay? But to, for the general public, who's, I mean, the only thing you hear is, "I live on a fixed income." They don't, they don't. I, I live on a fixed income according to the way people define it. I certainly did not get a 10% increase, and that's the way people are going to be looking at it.
We can go back and-
I'm sorry.
We can go back and forth on this all night, but we, it was explained to you what your, it answers your questions.
Yes, and I'll take the exception-
There is a 4% on there.
-that I didn't read it. I thought he was talking to 200,000.
We didn't, we just asked if you'd received it.
I did read it. I do understand it. But the same token, you've got to convince the public that it was fair, and that's going to be extremely hard to do-
Well, if you're out there-
-when they're getting the 2.7%.
If you're out there telling everybody it's 10%, you know, we need-
I'm sorry.
If you're telling everybody it's 10%, that's a misnomer.
It is.
That's not correct. It's not. It's an extra pay period is causing most of it. We don't have, we can, we have control of that.
But it's still 10% whether or not it's 10%.
Much as 10% raises.
It's an extra pay period. Everybody gets an extra pay period next year.
So what? It's still 10%.
But it's not a raise, it's, it's just by virtue of the way we go.
It's the city council's-
That's enough. All right. Anything else? Anyone else?
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court, and I will say that I appreciate one of my fellow residents coming up and, and pointing things out, because that is absolutely necessary. We do make some decisions in this council that, to me, absolutely makes very little sense. And I'm going to give you an example. They're saying that we're going to stop smoking in city parks. Well, that is your call, even though I do not agree with it, because we are the biggest city in Green County. But you're going to have to put up signs, and that's going to take additional money, money that could come from the parks and go into the senior citizens group, all right? So that's a concern. The other thing is, is we're going to make lawbreakers out of a lot of folks that come from within the county and or surrounding cities to use this park. I'm telling you, it does not make any sense that you deny individuals at least the courtesy to let them smoke. They will be responsible, but you guys are playing the nanny state. And that's what I've got to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I'll close the citizen portion. I think we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the employment or compensation of a public employee, the purchase of property for public purposes, and details relative to the security arrangements and the emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia. Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Littler.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes, and there will be a decision coming out of this that we will present afterward. So the, at this point, we'll be in executive session.
Okay, I need a motion to, uh, exit executive session.
Move to adjourn executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, leave executive session. Have a roll call please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes. Now I need a motion to reconvene our meeting.
Move to reconvene?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reconvene the, uh, regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, resolution twenty-five...
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-five thirty-seven.
Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase approximately sixty-two point five acres of land located at the southwest corner of US-35 and Factory Road, parcel ID number B four-two zero-zero-zero six-zero-zero-one six-zero-zero-zero one-zero-zero, from its current owner, East Bell Company, to secure the land for right-of-way for future road infrastructure and additional development by the city.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, council, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to, uh, secure this property and enclose on this property. Uh, this is the sixty-two and a half acres that is located, you know, off of US-35, uh, at Factory. This will, uh, secure, this is the, basically, if you recall, this is the spot of racetrack that attempted to go there, so this is securing that land so that it will never be a racetrack or any other facility like that. Uh, this, the biggest thing that this does is secure the nearly at least twenty acres. We don't know exactly. It depends on what kind of plans the state would come up with, but, uh, for a future potential overpass or upgrade that would happen to US-35 to the, uh, what they call super street now, um, but this, uh, secures all that right-of-way so that no matter, just about no matter what plan they would have, we would have enough land, uh, to accommodate, and that would count as our, uh, share of the cost as well, at least a portion of it. Um, if you have any questions here, happy to answer.
Mayor, uh, simply a comment. I think the residents spoke very clearly that they don't want a truck stop, uh, and this is a move on our part to stop any like move, and so I, I'm in favor of it now.
Furthermore, I think our residents have also expressed their disdain for the super street.
Yes.
And their desire for eventually to have an overpass, so, uh, to me, this makes a lot of sense.
As such, I think there are two very strong reasons for this.
Good motion.
Mayor, move to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that completes the business. Mr. Kern?
Move to adjourn, your honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. There's something that's just...
Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.